Right, right, at seven, so.
Okay, uh, let's see, everything looking good as far as, uh. All right, sound okay?
Yeah, yeah, everything is great on our end.
Visual, all right?
Okay, one minute. All right, thirty seconds. Okay, here we go, everybody. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening and welcome to this, the July thirteenth meeting of the Livermore City Council. Uh, I now call the meeting to order. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Monroe.
Oops, yep, here I am.
Councilmember Coomer.
Uh, please unmute yourself.
Well, that helps.
Welcome.
Councilmember Carley.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
You're.
Mayor Marshawn.
I'm here. All right, so with that, um, because of, uh, issues regarding feedback and delay uh, of the meeting platforms, I will be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Uh, please, uh, mute your microphones and follow along at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, as far as participating in tonight's meeting, uh, this meeting is being conducted uh, pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID nineteen transmissions at public meetings. Uh, the city of Livermore has met all the requirements, uh, for noticing. Uh, and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process, uh, that we'll be using the, in this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom, uh, meeting platform and YouTube. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comments through YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. Uh, the Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available, uh, on the city website, uh, and on the agenda. Uh, when participating in tonight's meeting, uh, one comment may be submitted per person, uh, per item. Comments should be no more than five hundred words. Uh, if you submit multiple comments, uh, for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items reserved, or items received prior to the meeting, uh, using email in the Google forms uh, on the city's website were already provided to the city council and we have read those. And the public, um, oh, I'm sorry, they will be provided to the council, they were provided to the council uh, and the public as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting uh, and therefore will not be read into the record, but rest assured that we have read those comments. Um, uh, Commission for the Arts Chair, oh, that will be, uh, the next item. Uh, yes, so we have the, uh, the next item will be the Proclamations and Presentations. This will be a presentation from the Commission for the Arts Advisory Body, this is their annual update. Uh, and we have, uh, Arts Commission Chair Bob Gaussman will be presenting the annual update.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you again this year. It's been a very interesting year for all of us, as you can tell. Uh, I'm the chair this year and we did have a new commissioner added, Commissioner Kathleen Dino Ornalis. We also switched the Arts Commission from the Community Development Office to me development to the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. And, um, we felt that that aligned better with the city's strategic goals. Uh, thanks to Adam Van de Water and Socia Melsteros for working so well with us, it's been a great transition, they've been really helpful helping with the Arts Commission. COVID, big impact, hard, uh, the impact on the local art scene, as you well know. Uh, the bankhead art shows, street walks, all are down. Uh, we're going virtually online, it's, um, it's really interesting. So, uh, but we're, we're going to be changing and doing some new rollout, so that's good. And other things stay the same, for instance, um, you probably have seen the locations around downtown. We did a terrific, uh, city completed the twenty twenty mural festival. Our local artist developer, Trent Thompson, organized that and, uh, very spectacular, if you've had a chance to see the murals downtown on Third Street and Second, uh, really a wonderful thing and not affected by COVID. You can go down there and look at that anytime. Really a good way to, to brighten up Livermore, it shows the support that local, the city has for the local art scene. We have, uh, where the, just at the beginning stages of doing a revision of our master plan, the cultural arts master plan, we're doing an RFP to get, uh, to get some assistance in the writing of that. That will guide our vision and work for the next decade. And the key thing is to align it with the city's goals and practices. So we feel it's a good mesh and that's why it's wonderful to be in the Innovation and Economic Development Department for that. Uh, there's also been several installations in the past year on private development. Uh, one was that Shea Homes, uh, they added some additional artworks, if you haven't been over there, north of the freeway. Really looks great, uh, Los Presidios had some and Vasco Road. And we completed the Flying Kites installation in front of the Civic Center Meeting Hall. Uh, also artwork in front of the new DHL building. It's, uh, very interesting when you, there's, when they figured out how much traffic went by that intersection today and how many sets of eyes see that sculpture at Isabel and Jack London Boulevard. Uh, also right there at City Hall, we've, uh, although people can't, not many folks are going in there now, but there's the activation, the Art Alco at City Hall and participation in the butterfly migration project. Uh, last, uh, want to mention, uh, shout out for, uh, besides the city council's strong support for the arts. We have more than twenty-three groups supporting arts in, uh, Livermore through the Livermore uh, Cultural Arts Council, Vice Mayor Bob Warner is faithful in attending those meetings. And to keep on top of it, we coordinate with the school district, the Parks Department, uh, Los Presidios College and the many, many arts groups located in the Tri Valley area. It's really a vibrant, uh, sustaining committee for art, so I want to thank, uh, City Council again for such strong support for the arts.
Well, thank you for the great work that you're doing. Uh, I've been, uh, downtown a number of times to see the murals, they're absolutely spectacular. Uh, we had this wonderful idea to bring people into the downtown for this wonderful mural festival. Uh, well, the problem was we couldn't have the people, uh, so we went ahead and had the festival anyway. And the, the works downtown are absolutely spectacular. Uh, the sculpture that you mentioned at, uh, uh, on, on Jack London and Isabel uh, is really remarkable and it's just, it's, it's so uplifting to have art becoming part of every day, everybody's everyday life, and I think that's, uh, um, that's really a, a lot to, uh, contribute to our quality of life. So, uh, my compliments to the, the great work that's being done by our art commission, uh, and thank you for the update, any questions? Let's see, hang on, let me get to. Okay, I see no hands raised. Uh, again, Bob, thanks for the great work and then send our best wishes to the commission, thank you. Okay, on to, uh, uh, public comment. Uh, I asked, well, we already went through the, uh, the rules on that one, so, uh, uh, to the city clerk, do we have any public comment today that has not already been received, uh, by the council?
We do, Mayor, City Clerk's office, will you please read the comments from Zoom into the record?
Okay.
This comment is from Evan. And it says, with the format we now use for public comment and for commenting on items, it has proven to be a challenge to react to the presentation. With the need to type out a comment, it sometimes takes time. There needs to be improvements on how comments are. Sorry, there needs to be improvements on how comments are taken to allow people to view the update and still be able to comment on the item. And that's currently the only, uh, uh, comment from Zoom.
Okay, uh, anything for YouTube?
Mayor, no comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay, uh, however, we did receive the, uh, the earlier comments in the, in the packet ahead of time. So now moving on to, uh, at that point, if there are no further comments, I'm going to close the citizens forum. Uh, moving on to the consent calendar, uh, does anybody wish to have any items pulled for a discussion on the consent calendar? Do you have any public comment? Okay, uh, with that, uh, I'd like a, a two-part motion for the consent calendar, if I may. Let me just, uh, move ahead here. Uh, move the consent calendar, what we would need to do also is, I'd like a motion to accept for the advisory bodies. Uh, Mark Garalca for the Beautification Committee. Uh, Carol Powers Robinson for the Commission for the Arts. Uh, Historic Preservation Commission, uh, Dennis Swanson. The Housing Authority, Matt Graves and Maureen Hamm for the, uh, uh, individual position that's, uh, uh, unexpired, Christine Stewart for the tenant position. Uh, Human Services Commission, Ian Carlin, uh, and for the Library Board. Uh, Mini Chopra Bhutani, uh, and Arthur Ponto. Do I have a motion, uh, for the?
I'll move, um, the consent calendar as well as the advisory board nominees.
Okay, uh, moved by Councilmember Carling, uh, I see, uh, Trish Monroe has raised her hand, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, move by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Monroe, uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, roll call, please.
That's Member Monroe.
Unmute yourself.
Working on it, sorry, yeah.
You can just press the space bar and that'll do it.
That was a yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. All right, passed unanimously, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to five point oh one, public hearings. Uh, this is a public hearing to consider protests related to the non-payment of solid waste recycling and organics handling services, this is something that, uh, the city requires that, uh, there be garbage service and solid waste service to, uh, uh, all residents and businesses because this really is a, a public health concern. Uh, so with that, I will hand it off to, uh, looks like, uh, Scott Lanfear will be, uh, handling this one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, City Council Members, this is Scott Lanfear, your Public Works Director. Uh, the presentation on item five point oh one will be given by Marissa Gann, so I'll turn it over to Marissa.
Thank you, Scott, good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council. My name's Marissa Gann and I'm the city's recycling specialist. Tonight, the City Council will consider approving assessments for the non-payment of services provided by Livermore Sanitation. There are approximately twenty-six thousand accounts serviced by Livermore Sanitation citywide. As of this afternoon, there are only fifty residential accounts and two commercial accounts that are more than twelve months behind on their payment, making them eligible for this assessment. I do want to highlight that these debts are from unpaid charges from July twenty eighteen through June twenty nineteen, which were prior to the outbreak of COVID nineteen and are thus exempt from the city's current program to waive fines or penalties during the shelter-in-place order. Despite repeated notifications from Livermore Sanitation, service reductions and two notices from the city of Livermore, these accounts continue to be significantly overdue. For the franchise agreement and the Livermore Municipal Code, the city is obligated to consider imposing assessments for these delinquent accounts. These customers had up until five o'clock today to pay the bill and not have their property assessed. Staff continues to observe a decline in the total number of assessments being proposed this year compared to previous years. More than half of the accounts on this year's list have been assessed in previous years, while almost ten percent have been assessed every year. Staff recommends that the City Council consider protests, adopt a resolution overruling protests and confirm the twenty twenty assessments, directing staff to forward a finalized copy of the assessment report to the county tax assessor. Thank you for your consideration and staff are available to, to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gann, uh, any questions for staff at this point? See, no, uh, hands raised, uh, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any protests, writing comments on the public hearing?
City Clerk's office, have we received any comments over Zoom?
Um, we did, but I'm not sure, I'm, I'm assuming it's for this item. It looks like there might still be typing. Um, right now it says, my name is John Dalryple and I'm here tonight representing over, oh. Yeah, so please disregard the above.
Just, so, looks like that may be for another item. So we will wait for Mr. Dalryple to resubmit.
Yep. So that's the only item for Zoom at this point.
Okay, uh, anything on, uh, um, uh, the YouTube?
He's been received over YouTube, Mayor.
Okay, well, very good, uh, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, uh, any comments from the council, uh, Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thanks, uh, we did get one, uh, email asking about, um, I guess discounts for low-income families, do we, is there, do we do anything like that, or do you know, uh, Marissa, whether we have any of, of the fifty-two that are outstanding, or they, you know, any of those low income, I'm not sure how you might know that.
We did receive a list of those that are on, uh, the low-income program through Livermore Sanitation. I did not cross-check, um, the lists to see if anybody is on the, on both of the lists.
But we do have a low-income, uh, program for those folks, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, that answers the question, I think, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, uh, Councilmember Monroe?
I just wanted to appreciate the amount of outreach that's taken place to these families. Uh, I, it, it sounds like I lost track of how many, how many times they were contacted, but it's really unfortunate that, um, that's the case. This is a, an essential service, so.
What's interesting is, is one of the, uh, the commercial accounts, uh, is actually one of our top sales tax generators. So the business is doing well, uh, and I'm just, I'm not really sure why they haven't been able to, uh, uh, keep up with the, something as important as, as solid waste. Uh, so any further comments? Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Carling, your hand is raised?
I forgot to put it down, but I'll move staff, I'll move recommendation of staff.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Monroe has seconded. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Monroe, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Very good, thank you. Uh, moving on to five point oh two, this is a public hearing for the confirmation of the levy of assessments for the city's landscape maintenance districts, I believe we have ninety-two landscape maintenance districts in, uh, in the city. And I actually noticed that a lot of them, I think a majority of them went down. Uh, which, uh, is, is something you don't very often see, but, uh, I mean, it goes, it speaks to the, uh, the care that's taken as these assessments are calculated. Uh, so with that, I will hand this off to staff, looks like it's, uh, Scott Lanfear again.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, again, this is Scott Lanfear, your Public Works Director. Tonight's presentation on item five point zero two will be provided by Sean Privet, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Sean Privet, a management analyst in the Public Works Department. The city currently has ninety-two landscape maintenance districts organized under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. In order to levy assessments to pay for the maintenance of these districts, the city must conduct a public hearing. On June twenty-second, the City Council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight, June, July thirteenth, as the public hearing date. Each year, staff reviews the cost, maintenance level and long-term financial stability of these ninety-two districts. Staff then recommends the level of assessment required to meet both the short-term and long-term maintenance needs of each district. Staff has completed this process and all the proposed assessments contained in the engineer's report are within the pre-approved paths. Staff is asking for the council to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the levy of assessments. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Mr. Privet? A quick question, uh, so the money that we collect from, say, Landscape Maintenance District number ninety-one, uh, that only goes to that Landscape Maintenance District. The city is not making any money on these. The money is actually dedicated, uh, somewhat similar to an enterprise to that district, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, all the money that is collected stays with the Landscape Maintenance District.
And, uh, I noticed that some of them had rather significant reserves, uh, above what the annual maintenance costs are. Uh, that's a renewal and replacement, uh, allowance for, uh, for future capital expenses?
Correct, yeah, so, um, a few years ago, the, um, the analyst who had my position before me, um, went through and did an analysis of all the assets in the districts and, um, came up with what was believed to be the replacement cost of all those assets. And we're just working towards about a sixty percent, um, availability of resources to replace those assets, um, since some of the districts are rather large. They have a great number of things like irrigation controllers, and if you have multiple going out at once, it's a very costly expense.
Okay, well, this is, this is in, this is consistent with what we're doing right now with the entire city with, you know, two and a half billion dollars in assets. We recognize that we have to accumulate the reserves necessary, necessary to replace those assets. So this is consistent, what we're doing citywide, it's consistent with each individual landscape maintenance district, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good, excellent, thank you, uh, any other questions from, uh, council members? Okay, with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Um, do we have any public comments from, uh, Zoom or YouTube?
City Clerk's office, have we received any comments over Zoom?
Not for this item.
Clerk's office, are there any comments for YouTube?
Not for this item.
Okay, well, very good then, well, in that case, seeing no, uh, uh, comments, no, uh, hands raised. I'm going to close the public comment period, close the public hearing, uh, bring it back to the council. Uh, any comments, uh, or questions from the council at this point? Okay, do you, I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, ca- motion made by, uh, Councilmember Coomer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner, uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe. Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. All right, let's see, there we go. It passed unanimously, very good, thank you. Moving on to five point oh three, this is a public hearing on the authorization to negotiate a development agreement to secure development consistent with the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. And of course, this is going to be predicated on, uh, the future of transit in the area to, to ensure, uh, a viable, uh, transit-oriented development. And of course, that means Valley Link, so, uh, with that, I'm going to, uh, this looks like, uh, Mr. Spence.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, we have, uh, Ashley Vera with us this evening, uh, Associate Planner, who's going to be providing a presentation.
Very good.
Ashley.
All right, good evening, everybody, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, give me one minute. Okay, and can everybody see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, like I said, good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council. My name is Ashley Varan, tonight I will be presenting a request to authorize a development agreement with PGM Communities LLC, known as SunCal. The project site is approximately forty-five acres and generally bound by Portola Avenue to the north, Isabel Avenue to the east, I five eighty to the south and Shea Center Drive to the west. The site is currently designated as Business Commercial Park in the general plan and zoned planned development industrial. This property is located within the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area. If adopted, the plan would replace the existing general plan land use designations and zoning districts that apply to the planning area. In this portion of the planning area, the plan envisions a mix of residential, office, neighborhood-serving commercial and neighborhood park development. The draft plan and supplemental environmental impact report were released June twenty-third and are available for public review on the city's website. On June second, two thousand twenty, the applicant submitted a development agreement application to the city to develop within the Isabel Neighborhood Plan. The Livermore Development Code requires initial review of a development agreement application by the City Council. City Council authorization is required before staff can begin to negotiate into a development agreement. However, this authorization does not predetermine future City Council actions and the City Council retains their discretion to approve, revise or deny the ultimate development agreement. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use project with residential, office, neighborhood-serving commercial and neighborhood park uses. The graphic shown on this slide is from the land use diagram presented in the draft plan and the project site is outlined in red. The residential uses are shown in yellow, tan and brown. The office uses are shown in purple. Neighborhood-serving commercial uses, including ground floor retail, are shown in red. And a neighborhood park is shown in green with a star. The applicant's plan will be evaluated for consistency with this land use plan and policies and will be reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council. This initial application review required by City Council also includes the general subject area staff would negotiate. The general topics of negotiation are slowed on this, I'm sorry, shown on this slide and include the terms, land uses, intensity of development, provision for public uses, amenities and performance schedules. Staff anticipates bringing the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan and associated supplemental environmental impact report for adoption hearings this fall. If the specific plan is adopted, this development agreement would be considered shortly thereafter at a future public meeting. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with negotiating draft terms to be considered by City Council at a future public meeting. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions. The applicant is also here tonight and available for any questions as well, thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much, uh, questions for staff? Let me, uh, see these hands, uh, okay. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. All right, I know questions. Uh, let's, uh, open up the public hearing. Do we have any comments from, uh, either YouTube or, or Zoom? Uh, Ms. Minister City Clerk?
You do, Mayor. City Clerk's Office, will you please read the comments received over Zoom?
We have a comment from Evan. And it says, "The Isabel Plan is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to plan for a neighborhood. As we move forward, I want to echo Steve Dunbar's comments that were submitted for the record. There are many opportunities to make this neighborhood bike and pedestrian-friendly. As we move forward on this project, it is important that we build amenities we can add during construction much cheaper than after construction, such as class-four bike lanes or pedestrian-friendly sidewalks." All right, then we have, um, from, uh, John Dalryple. My name is John Dalryple, and I'm here tonight representing close to five hundred Livermore residents. These residents are electricians, plumbers, sprinkler fitters, and sheet metal workers. They support the right kind of development in their community, development that is sustainable and equitable. We are not opposed to the city entering into the exclusive agreement with SunCal. We are concerned that the development agreement contains provisions that encourages the use of your local construction workforce and the use of apprentices.
Okay.
And then we have a comment from Mark Elgin. Isabel neighborhood is a very challenging area to develop, given it is split by eighty-four, five-eighty intersection. Please ensure to complete the overall specific plan and its ties to ATP for biking commute pedestrians, recreation before locking in a specific, uh, development. Make it best-in-class for non-auto transportation. Too many places in draft suggests the bath pipe, excuse me, bike paths, bridges come later.
Okay.
And then I have one more. Um, from Amy Panu, P-A-N-N-U. Please continue to integrate safe and guarded bike lanes and pedestrian-friendly walkways into all the plans. And that concludes what we have for Zoom.
Your comments, have you received anything over YouTube?
There have been no, I, no, uh, public comments submitted through YouTube on this item.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, being no further comments, I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing. Uh, for people that are not transportation wonks, ATP, uh, is the Active Transportation Plan, and that's, uh, a coordinated effort to make sure that our, the, uh, safe streets, uh, are safe for everybody, whether you're walking, biking, jogging, driving. It's that, that's safe streets, uh, concept, so that there's, uh, uh, safe transit for everybody. Uh, and that's the Active Transportation Plan that was referenced in one of the earlier comments. Um, okay, I'll bring it back to the council, closing the public hearing. Uh, are there any comments? I have, uh, Vice Mayor Warner has his hand raised.
Hey, uh, thank you. I want to say I'm, I'm glad to see that this, uh, project is moving forward. I know it's a long time we're thinking about that area, and I'm glad that we're, uh, going to be doing it consistent with the Isabel neighborhood plan. I'd also like to say that, um, I actually resonate with all of the, uh, public comment we had. And I noticed that, uh, you know, Mr. Dunbar put in a lot of detailed, um, requests. Um, you may discuss right here, but my question for staff is, how will, uh, those be addressed and what kind of feedback can you, or interaction can you have with Mr. Dunbar to make sure they're, um, understood and being worked? So that's the first question I have.
Sure. So this is Ashley Vera. Um, the comments that Steve Dunbar submitted are being reviewed, and, um, we plan on, uh, discussing them internally and discussing them, uh, directly with him to, uh, ensure that the, uh, the, um, comments are, are reviewed correctly and applied correctly.
Well, good. I thought they were very, uh, well-thought-out. And I'm not in a position to evaluate them all myself, but I just want to make sure they're given the, uh, the right attention. The, uh, second question I've got, we heard Mr. Dalryple suggest that for a project of this size and importance to the city, that we should, uh, engage more directly with the, uh, labor elements, especially those within the city, to see about how they can, um, you know, understand where, how they can participate. And I noticed that in the, um, requirements here of the negotiation agreement, I'd like to see if it's possible to add that we'll know the progress of those discussions and what might be an issue. And I want to add is, I, you know, recently had an opportunity to see some of the, uh, what goes on in the apprenticeship program and how valuable it is. Uh, so I, I just want to say, let's, um, see if we can't have a little bit more of, uh, progress towards interacting with the, our local labor. I know in the past, projects have come before us, and it's, in some ways, been way too late. And we say, oh, well, maybe next time. So I think this one is an opportunity for us to explore in much more detail and earnestness of how they might participate. So that was the, uh, the, the other comment I had.
Okay, and, uh, Councilmember Carling, you had your hand raised.
I do. Thank you. I think I'll put it down now while I'm thinking about it. Um, so thanks. I, uh, I just wonder, has Ms. Vera, we, I mean, we went through a fairly extensive, we, the city, went through a fairly extensive, uh, outreach with the public about this particular plan. Is that, that's true, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
So I think it would be incumbent upon us, certainly the developer, to take that very seriously and look at that, because this is something that's already come before the council, and I think we're very much in support of, uh, of that, uh, outreach program and the result of that. I'd also like to support Mr. Dunbar's, um, points. And if there's, uh, being an avid cyclist myself and cycling much more than I was prior to COVID nineteen, um, I've been on many of the streets, and I, I would encourage the developer to err on the side of more bike lanes and pedestrian walkways than to, uh, skimp on those. Because I think those are going to be very important for the future of this community. So I would support what Mr. Warner said in regard to, um, looking at what Mr. Dunbar's presented and would certainly support, um, incorporating most if not all his comments to the extent that we can. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Carling. Uh, Councilmember Monroe.
Yeah, um, and I would make that three for making sure that we have mixed use for, in the streets. Uh, I've been particularly appreciative of this project because of its mixed use, uh, the, the, the mixed-use nature. I also, uh, wanted to, uh, speak to Mr. Dalryple's comment, um, and to hope that the, uh, about to expect that at least, um, our local labor can have a, uh, be able to, um, ex- express what they need as part of the, uh, going forward, um, particularly because as we're looking at affordable housing, as we're looking at making, uh, a city a place where we have, um, many income levels, um, this is an important component. Um, I also just wanted to, um, add to, um, what Vice Mayor Warner said. I too attended that, uh, the apprenticeship program. And one of the things that was particularly striking is how those programs take people from, um, really nothing and build them into, you know, so people who have been in prison, people who have been homeless. Um, and give them a place to have a living, and I really feel like that's, that, that speaks to what Livermore values are to me. So I'm hoping that that can be something that, that can be part of this. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is just in terms of it's, it's, it's with regard to Valley Link. Um, Valley Link, and then also as we move forward into looking at the re-establishing of the RENA numbers, that is the regional housing, uh, uh, numbers assessment. Um, this is the kind of project that really builds the city in a way that, uh, enables us to grow um, in accordance to our, the expectations by the state, but also, uh, in a way that's, it is particularly Liver, what Livermore is. Um, so I think it's one fantastic.
Very good. Uh, I agree with the, uh, comments about the, um, the, the apprenticeships, because I was at the ABC NorCal uh, graduation ceremony, um, month or two ago, uh, actually a couple of months ago, I guess now, uh, where they, uh, as Councilmember Monroe pointed out, you had, uh, a number of young men and women that had gone through this program and now had the ability to, uh, to take care of their families, to be able to, uh, support them, uh, with, with a good-paying job. And so these are very important programs. Uh, with the, uh, there was a comment earlier that we received for the, uh, Citizens Forum, and it spoke to affordable housing. And, uh, um, one of the things that this, this Isabel neighborhood plan ultimately will do is provide, um, over one thousand affordable units, uh, to the city. So this is a critically important piece to provide for all of our residents and provide for a wide spectrum of people that are welcome in our community. Uh, so with that, um, any other comments from the, uh, either the city council or the, uh, public? No? Okay, um, let's see. Yeah, we had the public, uh, hearing. That was closed. Um, okay, is there a motion? Uh, Councilmember Monroe makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Carling seconds. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, so with that, moving on to, uh, six point oh one, uh, this, I think, the main event for tonight. I'm very excited to hear with the, uh, Equity and, uh, uh, Inclusion Committee or has to, uh, come back and, uh, they hear what they have to say. This is, uh, from the, uh, our new sub, new subcommittee. So with that, I will hand it off to, uh, I guess to staff first and then to them.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. Um, and, uh, tonight, uh, we're going to have a brief presentation by Captain Jeremy Young. Um, and then we will turn it over to the subcommittee, uh, and then ultimately, uh, be looking for direction from the city council in its entirety, um, to, uh, with relationship to the framework before you this evening. Um, any comments, additions, or changes you'd like to make to that? Um, and, uh, after that, essentially, the, uh, council would give direction to the subcommittee, and the subcommittee would go off and begin their work. So with that, I will, uh, turn it over to Captain Young, um, to give us a brief presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. On June twenty-second, the city council approved a resolution in support of the mayor's pledge and created a subcommittee to direct the process. The mayor's pledge calls for actions to include, one, review your police use-of-force policies. Two, engage your community by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in your review. Number three, report the findings of your review to your community and seek feedback. And number four, reform your community's police use-of-force policies. The subcommittee comprised of Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Monroe met on three occasions and created a framework to work through equity and inclusion issues. The Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee also created an objective, which is enable equity and inclusion in Livermore through diverse community engagement that result, will result in a welcoming city exemplified by equity of opportunity and just treatment for all. The framework was developed to address the mayor's pledge as well as other issues of concern as it relates to equity and inclusion. Staff is seeking direction and approval of the framework designed by the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee.
With that, Honorable Mayor, we'd like to turn it over at this point, um, to the subcommittee members themselves, um, to give you a little more information.
Great, thank you. And again, I certainly appreciate, uh, the two of you stepping up to undertake really this, this remarkable effort. So thank you. Uh, so I hand it off to the subcommittee.
And I'll hand it off to the Vice Mayor.
All right, I'd like to, uh, start, and I, you know, we, uh, met with staff, uh, as was said three times. But what we also did, which is somewhat unusual in this, is our draft document, uh, Councilmember Monroe and I decided to share it with a set of diverse groups within the community. And this was in advance of us, um, you know, putting it into the council package as a fait accompli. And I think that's meant to exemplify the fact that what we have here is a living document. We're not claiming it's perfect, but it's, what we're trying to do is get started here. And what are we trying to do? We're trying to achieve the objective that Captain Young mentioned of the equity, inclusion, and the welcoming and the fair treatment for all. And how do we intend to go about it within this framework? The first step is articulate what is it that we aspire to, see where we are now, and figure out w- ways that we can close the gap in a variety of timeframes, the short, mid, and long term. That's the first step. Second step is to develop real actionable plans with timelines and expectations. And then the third is to report out as we go, learn from our experience, make sure we're transparent, and that people can have ready access to what we're, uh, what's going on. So those are the three, uh, components of the framework. I'll say that, uh, this document before you , uh, really evolved as we spoke with, uh, I'd say a dozen or more members of the community with all their perspectives. We must have spent, I don't know, twenty, thirty hours on this, talking to everybody.
A long time.
Pardon?
A long time.
A long time. And actually, it was very, uh, exhausting, because as you listen to the stories of what people are experiencing here, uh, they're very, um, you know, they really tug at your heart, and you, and so this is an opportunity here for us to step back and think deeply about our values, is one thing. And the other is to, what kind of action can we take? So that's how I would frame this. Uh, as was said, what we're asking for basically is the approval of this framework. Welcome, uh, additions to it, modifications at this stage, but the idea is let's get a framework adopted, knowing that it will evolve, and that once we can adopt this framework, we intend to form a working group. I've saved dozen, dozen and a half people. They themselves would have contacts and get input throughout the community. That we would, uh, develop an application. The staff, if we get approval for this framework, would develop an application for people to, um, join this working group. Then we would, uh, through the subcommittee, make, uh, recommendations for who would join it. That would come back to the council for approval. And, uh, the other thing that we would seek, uh, go ahead on tonight, is understanding that whatever working group we put together would have a sunset provision. Not that we wouldn't renew it, but it's always a good idea to, um, reevaluate what you're doing and the components. And some of the timeframes that we're talking about there would be, uh, a year, perhaps a year and a half. Uh, so that's what I have to say here, and I'm sure, uh, Councilmember Monroe would, uh, add more.
Sure. Um, so, uh, I, I would, I would just say that, uh, beginning with the, be- beginning three weeks ago, when we talked a little bit about this at council and, um, established that maybe we wanted to do short, medium, and, and long-range goals. Um, and then, uh, our first review with staff, and then our meetings with, uh, the many, and just the beginnings, of course, of meeting with, with, and getting community input on this. Um, this did evolve quite a bit. Um, I think it's worth sharing the actual statement of the why we, uh, the, the title has become the Subcommittee on Equity and Inclusion with Implications for Public Safety, and I, I thought it was worth saying a little bit about that. Because of course, this started with And I thought it was worth saying a little bit about that because, of course, this started with the idea that this is about public safety and this is about making sure that the relationships between the police department and the community are good. But as we talked, it became clear it was broader than that. And the best language we could come up with was equity and inclusion to go along with implications for public safety. So if you think it's an awkward title, you're not wrong. And then the second thing is that we felt that it needed to have a why there. And I wanted to read what we came up with. And again, that this has been something that's been a work in progress. So we've gotten quite a bit of feedback from people on, did this work? Here's what it is. Spurred by the recent death of George Floyd and so many others, Livermore residents have called on the city government for the urgent need to address structural racism and its impact on people of color in our community. Livermore is leading by example to ensure all community members are treated justly. We commit to listen, respond, and act on these issues to better embed equity and justice in our community. The Subcommittee framework is designed to develop new ways to bring belonging and change. The committee will be, the committee will be inclusive, both in diverse representation and in gathering information from the community. While short-term goals will focus on public safety and more specifically, police policy and practice, the Subcommittee will identify with community input, longer-term themes, goals, and timeframes for implementation. So the intention there is, that should say in two sentences, what Vice Mayor Warner said. It should give both the direction of the values that we hope to go forward with this, but also the sense that this really is a work in progress. Because we cannot, without asking the questions, say we know precisely the answers. So that would be my addition.
All right. Very good. Any other comments before I open the public hearing or the public comment period? Again, this is going to be part of a long conversation. We hear people saying, well, we want something done now. But on the other hand, we've also heard that this should be a very deep conversation. And as to Councilmember or to Vice Mayor Warner's point, identify the goal and identify the problem we're trying to solve. And I think that the directions you're going to get those deep community conversations and those experiences, I think that's going to help frame the, the direction that we go. So with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Madam City Clerk.
Clerk's office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
The first comment is from Andrew Barker. I appreciate the steps that you've taken to consider reform of policing. And I know that you have the best of intentions. However, the objective of this Subcommittee is disappointing. The proposed language includes no specific goals, provides no metrics for success, and does not lend itself to any concrete actions. The Subcommittee's goals and objectives should be specific to policing and targeted to particular changes the City Council can actually implement in practice. I suggest the following objective. By the end of 2020, identify and improve civilian oversight structure for the Livermore Police Department and draft targeted revisions to the department's policy manual and its contract with the Livermore Police Officers Association with the goal of adopting best practices from other departments as measured by reduce incidents of police violence, reduce citizen complaints, and improve public safety. Then the next comment is from Brittany Kik. The framework proposed is a great start. I would love to see a dedicated communication channel, specific website on the city website, social media page, et cetera, focused on this issue as the scope is so large and complex. I am unsure what that might look like based on city protocol, but I would love for a clear communication plan to explain as soon as possible so all stakeholders can stay updated. From Evan. Livermore is a wonderful place to live. Part of that is that we are a safe city. Unfortunately, not everyone in our city feels safe. We have an opportunity now to look at public safety, our culture of inclusion, and one-third of the city's budget. This committee has the tools to improve public safety for all residents of Livermore, as well as improve the working conditions for our police. As we move forward, it will be important that we act with both haste while working on long-term, meaningful improvements. I'm glad this committee is committed to reaching out to a wide variety of communities as we learn what we can and should do. I look forward to hearing from this committee as they learn from various communities in our city and see meaningful improvements. And then from Brian Powell. I was encouraged to see a small number of contacts with LPD resulting in use of force as published and discussed during the last council meeting. These statistics are reassuring to me as a citizen. But can these statistics be published on a more frequent basis? And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Okay, any comments on YouTube?
No comments have been submitted on YouTube.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the Council for discussion.
Looks, looks like one more comment came in.
Let's see.
We did just receive a comment from Zoom.
Okay.
From Tracy Kronzak, K R O N Z A K. The opportunity we have before us is to entrench equity and inclusion into the city's actions as part of this work. Two items, two items of question. One, why is there a time box on the committee's actions? There will be ongoing need for this work as we grow, as the city encounters new issues, and ultimately, as we diversify as a community. Two, how does the committee recommend opening greater transparency into the communities included in its actions? Understandably, it needed to begin somewhere, but I'm not hearing an inclusive outreach mechanism articulated. And I believe there was one more after that from Julie LeBlanc. How can people get involved with this committee?
That's, that's what I wanted to hear. How do people get involved? Because this is something that's obviously very important. It's got to be a very deep conversation with a very diverse set of inputs. So with that, handing it back to the Subcommittee.
Um, let me see, let me, let me, let me take a stab. Let me, let me go from the bottom up. Let's, let's start talking about the questions. Let's see, why is there a box around it? Because part of the, because as Vice Mayor Warner said, the sunset would be, enable us to look at where we are and where we would go forward. For example, one possible outcome that would enmesh this in this, in the city would be, I am not at all saying that this is going to happen. This is, you know, is, someone has suggested an equity commission that would do that, but that might be an outcome of this committee. Or this committee could then be renewed for another period of time. So the nature of the committee is to have a task, which is in process of being established. That's the, you know, the and then to go forward with that. As far as how to get involved and how to ensure that it is inclusive, I believe one of the things we're talking about is, this is hard. You, there are people whose jobs it is to do the outreach. If, if one of the, during the downtown outreach process, there was a consultant hired to do the outreach. And part of that was done through multiple modes, but that would be my expectation. Vice Mayor Warner, do you want to take some of the others?
Well, you know, a couple of thoughts. First of all, I just want to get the language right. What we're talking about is Councilmember Monroe and I are the Subcommittee. And we're talking about convening a working group that we would work with to find out what the issues are that we need to solve. Now, with respect to the time box, I mean, there are two ways to think about this. One is, as we heard from Mr. Barker, there's a lot of people that want action now, right? Before we've understood what the problem is, they want something defined within a timeframe. So we've tried to accommodate that by saying, there are things and that we think are in consideration and they're listed in our document as food for thought. It could be accomplished in six months. Now, some of the, and other things are going to take longer, especially those that require coordination with, say, the school district or the park district, or you need something backing from the state legislature. So there's a variety of things that we can do and we will consider, and there are associated timeframes. So there should be something in here for everyone with respect to those who want something to happen now and those that understand that many of the fundamental issues are deep-seated or are going to take a long time to understand how we reach the values that we ascribe, aspire to. So that's what I would say. Now, the, what I did say earlier is that we are, once we, if we get approval for this framework, we will have staff develop an application. And we would hope that we could get that application out and sort through the applicants within a month. We would be back before the Council asking for approval for who would be in the working group. Then I think the other important point that we're saying here is, we're not presuming we know the answer. That's why we didn't come out definitively in this document and saying, we know everything and this is what you need to do. What we're saying is, this is complicated. There are many different perspectives. And just the conversations that Councilmember Monroe and I had with some of the diverse people in our community are eye-openers. So we're not going to presume we know the answers. We do know there are significant issues. And we want to convene this working group to understand them and come up with a rational plan. The other thing that we alluded to in part three of our framework was there are several things, and we, I think we mentioned a couple of them, that could be some of the metrics. But again, what does the community and outside experts and what do we learn from other jurisdictions as to what the right metrics are? So this document in no way was intended to be a definitive, we have the answer. It was intended to be, this is how we will work with the community broadly to define the problem and come up with a good plan.
Councilmember Carley, you've had your hand up for quite a while.
Yeah, thanks. I, I guess I fall into the category of action now. I think I conveyed that at the last, our last meeting. I guess I fall into the Andrew Barker point of view and looking for objectives that are timely, specific, and measurable. And I find it a little, I mean, I appreciate the point about equity and inclusion in the community, but the issue from, that has been loud and clear from following George Floyd's death is to take a look at police departments and their practices and policies. And I, for one, agree with Andrew Barker that we ought to be able to figure something out here in the next few months. And maybe, I mean, it's a little confusing to me in your document, and I, I guess your short-term objectives in the next six months, are those all related to looking at policing practices and policies? Because if, if that's true, that's not clear. That wasn't clear to me. And I thought that that's what the focus, the early focus was going to really hone in on in meeting the, called the Mayor's Pleasure, what Obama put forward, all-around policing. And I worry that it's been diluted with some of these other things. And I, I guess I would offer that we ought to focus on looking at policing practices and policies now and not pick up on some of these other things until after we've solved that and do that in the next, I don't know, three to six months.
Well, if I could just speak to that. So we've had a number of conversations specifically about the eight can't wait. And we have rewritten our Policies Manual several times since the Campaign Zero organization published their results and their determination on the city of Livermore. So in my conversations, we have substantially complied with all the eight can't wait. We actually abolished the carotid hold before San Francisco. And San Francisco got front-page headlines because of it. So I think, so we've got these, these metrics in place already, and we think we moved very quickly on that. I think it's also important to have a solid understanding of expectations here. Now, in some of these early community conversations that we've had, people said that they did not feel safe or they did not feel that they were welcomed. And I've had a number of conversations with folks in school districts and the like. But I can control, to some extent, how someone who works for the city of Livermore conducts themselves. We can set down requirements that they must conduct themselves with a certain level of professionalism for everyone. And that public safety applies to everyone. When some of the conversations that I've heard, people said that they did not feel safe around their peers or welcomed around other people in the community. Now, one of the demonstrations that I was at last month, there was, there were a couple of young people that drove past the demonstration, and they were disrespectful to the people that were demonstrating. We cannot control that. So we, we, to a certain extent, you can control what people do, but you can't control what people think. And that's why I think the efforts of this committee are so important, is because we're going to be digging down into the community to actually change the way people think, to create a cadre, if you will, where we can have these conversations, where you start to change the way people think. And that's how you change what people do. You can legislate that only to a certain extent, but you can't legislate that you shall not hate. You shall not be a bigot. You can't legislate that. That's a much deeper conversation. And that's how everybody's going to feel safe in this community, is when we bring everybody on board and create a greater understanding as a community to be more inclusive, to be more welcoming, and to work toward equity. So I think that's, that's, there's the short-term stuff that we can do, like the eight can't wait. But to have this much larger conversation, I think that's where we're going to get real depth. And where we start to make a systemic change. Because we've seen that you can't legislate away systemic racism. You have to change the mindset, and that's what's going to take the time. And I certainly appreciate the undertaking that you guys have. Okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Warner.
I want to say a couple of things. Councilmember Carley. It's right there. To AI, review use of force policy and make desired changes, e.g., eight can't wait in six months. Very specific, and that's, but it turns out that when we talked with the community, as the mayor was saying, this and Councilmember Monroe, this is much deeper. So for example, in the conversations I had, the issue really wasn't in this community worried about Minneapolis kind of things happening here. That wasn't it. The kind of examples we got were a black member of the community was showing someone around his homeowners association common area. And a person came out, and this only within the last few weeks, came out and said, hey, you're trespassing. I'm going to call the police. You need to get out of here now. And it's where he lives. That hasn't got anything to do with the use of force, but it's a real problem here. It's the same thing that the mayor just mentioned about how people were harassed at one of those demonstrations. So it would be, you know, just inappropriate to have such a narrow focus and say, I urgently need to do something without thinking about this larger picture. and say, I urgently need to do something without thinking about this larger picture. So as an example, if you've seen in many communities and it's even happening at the state level, there are anti harassment ordinances being considered. So that if you call nine one one to harass somebody that you don't like, that you're prejudiced against, that it's your problem. So that's an example where this, there are things that we can do in the short term that are very meaningful, that are beyond simply saying, oh, they had a problem in Minneapolis. We need to react and just solve that problem. What we did was listen to what the problem here is, and that's what we're trying to deal with. So we're not saying we're going to take forever and just BS. What we are saying is we understand there are things that need to be heard from the community. And that we do have a sense of urgency, but we're not going to be narrowly focused.
Councilmember Monroe and then Councilmember Coomer.
Right, well, I was going to say very similar. Vice Mayor Warner beat me to it. I wanted to add one thing, which is that I, I, I noticed two things as we were having the conversations. And just to be clear, these were just, these were people who happened to have, send emails in one way or another and happened to be available. So there was no particular reaching out. This was not part of the formal outreach process. It's just conversations that happened to be sent our way. When we opened up to just hear what people had to say, this is what came out. This is what was not our predetermined assumptions. This was what we were being asked to do. I think it's really important that we pay attention to that response, be responsive in that way. And the second thing I noticed, it was a very small sample size, just to be clear, is that the people who are most concerned about policing were white. The people who are most concerned about inclusion were black. And, you know, small sample size, however, it may say something about the nature of being a very small minority in Livermore.
Councilmember Coomer.
Well, I, I'm curious for the subcommittee members, what was the police department response to the, to what you heard out in the street? Was there a police presence to perhaps offer an explanation to that? And will there be on this subcommittee?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Oh, let me.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like, here, make it simple. With, when you, when you hear a lot from the community, but you don't try to offset that from a response of some sort from the police department, then you're getting one side of a story. And I can tell you as a police officer that that is often a problem where you, you hear about things. You're responding to a call about an event or something like that. And I, I just want to make sure there is a police department representation on, on the, when we start choosing members of this subcommittee.
I think I agree with you. And I think there are two ways that can happen. We have staff that are on, you know, in the police department. And they were part of the initial drafting of our framing document. And we got, had a lot of feedback of, does this make sense to you? But that's at the executive level in the police department. I think that we also need to engage at the frontline level as well. So that, what we're really saying is we need to have this as a diverse set of perspectives. And we found with what we've done so far, as Councilmember Monroe said, this document isn't really, isn't what we started with, I'll tell you. There, the many members of the community engaged with us and gave us tremendous improvements to the document. So, you know, if we, this has to be all sides of the issue. It has to be practical, has to work. It isn't going to be done by fiat by a, by a small group with one point of view.
Thank you. I, that's what I wanted to hear. And I, I approve of moving ahead with this particular document.
So thank you. I just want to say is that the question you asked and ability to answer it is really important. That what we would expect to happen is we'll convene the working group. We will get these perspectives and we will be bringing it back to the council as we go forward. There's no sense that we'll go out there for six months and come back and there'll be a council package saying approve these measures. It isn't going to work that way. There's going to be very close feedback to the council as we go along here.
I think it's important to recognize that to Councilmember Coomer's point about, you're aware of the police on this. And I think it's important to recognize that during the demonstrations that we had in Livermore, that our police officers were there to ensure that everybody stayed safe. They, they worked with the people that were demonstrating and with the community to make sure that everybody was safe and that they could peacefully assemble. And I think that's, that's very important because right there on the ground, in the streets, there was collaboration. They were working together and they were being professional. In the couple hundred emails that I responded to this previous month, one of the things I kept hearing over and over again similarly was this impatience. They wanted, they wanted us to check the boxes. You know, that's just all you do is just check the boxes and let's get a quick fix on this. But if we get so focused on checking the boxes, remember in, in Minneapolis, one of the boxes that they checked was de-escalation. They also checked the box for a continuum of force. And they checked the box, the duty to intervene. And obviously, the police officers that, that they were part of the murder of George Floyd, they didn't remember that those boxes had been checked because they didn't do any of those things that they were required to do in their policies. What we're doing here, I think is even more important. Yes, we have checked the boxes. But more importantly, we are building a culture, that culture of equity, of inclusion and professionalism. And that's where you see the real change. It's not about checking boxes. It's creating that culture. And, and that's why I applaud the subcommittee for going so deeply into the community to get the responses. So that we can begin to change that mindset and change the way people think. Councilmember Monroe.
Actually, I think Councilmember Carling was first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. I just, we also got a couple of emails today from residents talking about homeless and somehow, this is regarding six point oh one. So, and concerned about not dealing with homeless for another eighteen months. And I just wanted to point out, and I guess I'm just assuming this, I'm not even sure. But in the framework, it talks about housing as a part of the long-term objective beyond eighteen months. And so I'm, I'm making an assumption that this two emails that we received saw that and assumed that we, the city weren't dealing with homeless, wouldn't deal with homeless for another eighteen months. And for those that are listening, we have a homeless subcommittee here in the, in the community on the city council. Councilmember Monroe and I both on that. The city is spending hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars dealing with the homeless issue here in our community and, and including supporting the churches that are also, as pointed out in these emails, the churches have been very involved and we all appreciate that, but the city is putting up their share of this work as well. And I just wanted to point out, for anybody that's listening, this doesn't mean that we absolve ourselves from dealing with homeless for another eighteen months. That's still ongoing. It's still an important part of what we're, the city council and the city staff are all about. It's taking care of everybody in our community, not just, not those that have homes and are making it day by day, but those people that are struggling, making ends meet and not having a place to live. So I just wanted to point that out because we did get, as I mentioned, we did get a couple of emails today seeking some explanation about why we weren't dealing with the homeless issue for another eighteen months. Thank you.
Well, and, and to our, to your point, Councilmember Carling, we just added seventy-two affordable units. Some specifically for homeless. We just added another forty-two affordable family units, some specifically for homeless. We've, and we're, so we're, we continue to be dedicated to this. So, yeah, we're not delaying this. We, we're running on all eight cylinders here. And this is a lot of, a lot of balls in the air. If I could just speak to a comment, we just got a comment from Carolyn Robinson. And she refers to a previous Tri Valley meeting with the police chiefs. And, and this is, the reason I want to address this is because there's misinformation in this and I want to make sure this gets corrected. It says, we had the police chiefs of Dublin and Pleasanton, Livermore P D did not show up. That is incorrect. I was there, mayor, the, the police chief Harris was there. It was Pleasanton's police chief and Pleasanton's mayor that were not there. But Dublin and Livermore were in fact there and we continue to be committed to this. The reason that Pleasanton police chief and mayor were not there is because they wanted to have the council conversation first. We felt it was important enough, and I felt it was important enough, that I needed to be there and the police chief agreed with me. So just to make a statement, she says, it was upsetting that Livermore P D wasn't representing itself. It absolutely was. Livermore was there, the chief was there, the mayor was there. You're confused. Pleasanton was not there. They sent another member of the council. But Livermore and Dublin were absolutely there because I was on that call. I was on that Zoom meeting. And it was, it was an excellent meeting. Shayna Pete from Circles for Change was the moderator. It was a great program. And I think you probably still, still see that. So with that, I'm going to go over to Vice Mayor Warner.
I wanted to build on what Councilmember Carling said. He just brought up an extremely important point when talking about the homeless. And I think about it more broadly in the human services. So if you think about what we have is outreach to certain members of the community from, on the human services point. And we also have what you might consider the traditional policing. And there's definitely an overlap. So when, so both things are going to be going forward. No question about it. We have two subcommittees now. They're both going to be working. And I think what is pointed out here is there is this overlap and we have to sort it out. So for instance, the, you talk about the death of George Floyd and you think that's racist motivated. And then you get into the use of force. But one of the major areas of concern for the use of force is homelessness and mental ill, illness. Neither one of which are necessarily racist. So what we've tried to recognize here is that there are the racism, equity and inclusion elements. And there's the use of force and traditional policing elements. And there, there's the overlap with how we outreach. And so the people when they're saying, let's defund the police are basically saying, let's shift some of the resources from the traditional policing into the more the human services area. So we recognize this and that's part of the reason why this document is written this way is to allow that overlap, allow the two subcommittees and the community to sort it out. And that's where, where we're going. But I would absolutely agree with you that people should not lose sight of the fact that your subcommittee with Councilmember Monroe is going to be going forward. And I think the value here is we've got these two subcommittees, but we have one common member. And that should also help on the coordination. So I, I think what Councilmember Carling brought up is extremely important and I completely agree.
Councilmember Monroe.
Man, just giving away all my good lines. So a, a couple of things. I just, to, to the two letters that Councilmember Carling referenced, I, I absolutely somehow equity and inclusion seem to, to include homelessness and affordable housing. Sure, in the long range that does, but that wasn't what we were actually getting at with, with this particular committee. That said, in my report out, there's actually a couple of things about both issues that will be coming up. So stay tuned for that. And I noticed that, shoot, Carolyn did say, oops, sorry. So I have to say, having this chat feature does have, you know, you, you get some stuff going on in real life. However, there were a couple of comments about, golly, couldn't we have better communication on an ongoing basis? So between, this was specifically referring to the police department and citizenry of our, the, for our community. But in general, that is something I think we are striving to do. And this, as much as anything else, would be something that we would continue to try to get good information out. I think Brittany Kink mentioned having some sort of a website, depending on how that can work, given our constraints. I think that's a great idea. Keeping people involved and informed is certainly part of this. And I'll just say that the, one of the difficulties of my being this sort of middle piece between the homelessness subcommittee and the inclusion and equity subcommittee is making sure that Brown Act doesn't get violated, but I'll work on that.
Okay, we've had a lot of discussion. I think a lot of meaningful discussion. This is a huge undertaking and I think that this represents a reasonable framework on, on moving ahead. Do you have any other direction that you need from, from the council? The staff is going to be working with the subcommittee. So do you have enough?
I just want to reiterate that what we're really talking about with, and certainly these points of view that we've heard will be incorporated. We are going to try and move quickly. We will move quickly. But what we're specifically asking for tonight is approval of the framework, realizing it's an evolving document. But that we will assemble a working group of up to say a dozen and a half people. The staff will be directed to put together an appropriate application. That the subcommittee will review the applicants and make it, make the choices. And that, that we need that approval so that we can begin the recruitment consistent with this framework. So that's specifically what we're asking for.
Okay.
Just an item from your, from your city manager, Vice Mayor, just a clarification on that. I got all those items. The question is whether the subcommittee would make recommendations on the working group or make the final decisions on the membership of the working group. What was the intent of your motion?
Well, the way we normally do it, that we approved tonight, we have this, the, the group that interviews the applicants. We make the recommendations and then it comes back to the council for approval.
Very good. I'm clear on that.
Councilmember Monroe.
Just before we, we, we close this, I wanted to give a shout out to Chief Harris and the police department for their help in putting this together. But Captain Young did a, a good job with the staff report. And just the cooperation going forward, or, you know, en- enabling us to go forward, I think has been, been great. I know that, as I think everyone knows, Chief Harris is going to be retiring. And, and I think as everyone knows, he's been long planned. But I really appreciate the fact that he stuck around long enough to see us through to this transition point.
Well, and I think, you know, he also instituted the, the six pillars of community policing and brought in the community policing model. And when you look at those six pillars, they, they're very similar to the Peels principles of modern policing, which goes back to London in eighteen twenty-nine, which are really the foundation of modern policing. So he has already planted the seeds of, of change and, and modernizing our police department. He also oversaw the updating of our, our policy manuals. So he's done a tremendous amount of work and And we wish him all the very best in his retirement. So back to the subcommittee, is there anything else that you need from the council tonight? I say the framework looks great. I think it's a good starting place. And you've got a tremendous amount of work ahead of you, and I certainly appreciate you guys taking that on. Anybody else? Okay, go forth and engage the community.
Do you need a motion? Do we have to like approve this?
No, it's a direction. It's a discussion and direction. So, well, do we need a formal approval, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney?
Your, your city manager would love to have just a motion, if even the motion was just to encapsulate with the Vice Mayor listed office's three main items there.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, move by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marchand.
Hi. Well, again, thank you all very much. Six point oh two. This is the oral report from the Director of the Emergency Services regarding the COVID- nineteen emergency, its impacts, and governmental operations.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and also the Director of your Emergency Services. As you know, we entered into our local emergency on March thirteenth. And since that time, we have been working in our role as emergency management workers for you all. You'll recall that we have passed several specific orders that are related to reacting to the emergency so far. And I did want to just give a, a quick update on what has been happening, happening in the last few days. And then provide you all the opportunity to both ask questions and give direction if appropriate. So zooming out to the big picture, our current case count here in Alameda County is that we have a set, a total of seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-six total cases since the beginning of the emergency in Alameda County. In Alameda County, there's been a hundred and forty-eight deaths over that time since March. In Livermore, our case count is currently, or at least it was a little early this evening, two hundred and eighty-two cases. And so on the one hand, two hundred and eighty-two cases does not sound horrifically alarming in a community of nearly ninety thousand. But I think both what your staff is concerned about, and of course, what the county is concerned about, is sort of the rate of change. Our, our case count rate now is hovering between ten and fifteen new cases a day. And that's roughly ten times what it was a month ago. So for the first three months of the emergency, we were adding somewhere between zero and one case a day over the long-term average, and we are now between ten and twelve cases a day. The good news is that number does not seem to be sharply accelerating beyond that at this point. So there's a tiny glimmer of hope there. We completed this weekend our second First Street downtown closure. You'll remember the council directed me in my role as your Emergency Services Director to both facilitate outdoor dining and retail in our downtown. We did that through a number of steps, including having expanded areas for outdoor restaurants. You also directed us to consider street closures and to hear feedback from the community and from our downtown merchants and restaurateurs and make any appropriate adjustments on that. So our first street closure happened a little over two weeks ago now. And the complete street closure was successful in some ways in that it gave more space for people to walk about downtown. But ultimately, our retailers were significantly and negatively impacted by that street closure. And so based on council's previous direction that we continue to make adjustments to that, this closure this last weekend involved keeping portions of the street between McLeod and J Street open to limited amounts of traffic. And we believe that that was an improvement. We will continue to do outreach and continue to make adjustments. The big news this last weekend, however, had to do with the county making a press release late Friday night based on their interpretation of state guidance. They followed that up with several more press releases throughout the weekend. And from their perspective, it is county staff's belief that currently, based on the fact that Alameda County is, has not been approved as a variance county or has not reached attestation, those are the two words for the same thing, that outdoor dining is not currently permitted in Alameda County. As was noted in some of the media and in some of the information you received from me, the county did not issue a new order, and neither did the state. This was an interpretation of a combination of different regulations in different places in both state orders and guidance that had been given previously, and it was the county's interpretation of that. We continue to work with both the county and the state to get greater clarity on what the, the actual requirements are. These parts continue to move. The first moving part is that this, the county is going through the variance process. The staff in county health have started that process, and our application is in process. The County Board of Supervisors at their meeting tomorrow is scheduled to consider a letter of support for that process. And so we certainly hope that the County Board Supervisor approves that. What that would allow our county health official to do is to, to complete that process. In the middle of this, the state has declared that they are not going to be entertaining any new applications for variance. So the county staff earlier today did not have a definitive answer on, since their application was currently in process, were they considered new, that is excluded from getting a variance, or were they considered essentially in process and therefore covered and not affected by this new regulation or announcement from the governor's office? So we will continue to work with both the state and governor. As you might imagine, for our community, for our local merchants, and for your city staff, you know, what we would like most of all is some clarity as we move forward to address these issues. This is very serious stuff from the perspective of, we want to make sure that the community is safe, that we stem the spread of disease, and at the same time, that to the extent that we can, we give clear direction so that people understand what the rules and regulations are and that our businesses know how to react to there. So we will be working as your local staff here with your county and state governments to try and get further information so that we can ideally, along before the weekend, have some more guidance on that. As I noted in my previous information that I sent to you, with the lack of clarity at either the state and county level at this point, the city will not be taking any independent enforcement action against businesses that are in compliance with what was until Friday night, the understanding of what was permitted and not. Should the state or county clarify that with a new order, and of course, your local staff will move to implement any items that are appropriately adopted. And so we know that they're moving pieces at both the state and county level on this one, and we, it has our attention, and a number of our staff are, are both working with state and county representatives and trying to get further clarification on this. One of the items I do want to bring up is you did ask us to monitor how the closures went and how essentially the safety of the area was maintained. Of course, inside the closure area, as in any area when you're outdoors and you are likely to ultimately be in closer proximity with people, you are required to wear a mask. And actually, not just have that available, but, but wearing that at all times, except when you're actually eating in downtown. And we have posted additional information. We've reached out to our merchants and our restaurateurs. So when people were in areas where a particular restaurateur had control over the area, we noticed the compliance was a little better. It was just over half or a little more of the folks were wearing face masks at times they would have been required to do so. As we moved out into the areas of the street and other areas, the compliance rate unfortunately went down. So that does raise a, a risk factor for us as we bring, create an area where large numbers of folks from the community can come and gather. It is particularly important that complying with county regulations in that area is important. So did want to report, that is sort of our latest information that we have moving forward on our closures. Certainly, I and your staff are available for questions and ready to take any additional direction that you may have.
Okay, Customer Carling, you got a question?
Well, I don't know whether it's a question as much as supporting a point you made. I admittedly, this is a very unscientific survey. When I was riding my bike today, and I would say outside of downtown, less than ten percent of the people that were out walking, riding bikes, jogging, less than ten percent were wearing masks or face coverings. And I counted probably sixty-ish people. So I'm talking about less than a handful that had masks on or a face covering. When I got to downtown, it was a little better, and I think I would agree with Mark's assessment of about half. But again, you know, there are people standing outside of getting coffee, and some had masks on, some didn't. And I just, I mean, this is such an easy thing to do. And I would, I don't know how we can encourage people to wear masks or face coverings, but it's something that we have to, we have to keep talking about because I think it's vitally important. So that would, I just want to support Mark's point about mask wearing and face coverings. Thank you.
Well, I saw a, a comment yesterday that said, "Wearing a mask is not a political statement. It's an IQ test." So, Councilmember Monroe.
Right, so similar comment to Councilmember Carling about the face mask, lack of face masks wandering around town still. As I wander, you know, take walks, see very few people, and I recognize outside is better than inside and so on. I'm also somewhat concerned because while I have, have not dined outside, I do continue to order out, and not all of the servers have, are using, some of the servers are using the masks as chin coverings. I don't know if anyone's seen the bingo for, for different ways to wear masks, but anyway, this was on that bingo chart. None of them were right. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'm not sure whether we're doing public comment, but I noticed one came in about compliance, about, you know.
We haven't opened public comment yet.
Well, so never mind. I'll, I'll, I won't, I won't highlight that. I did, I, I, as our numbers are going up, I would really like us not to have to roll back. And it's actually not that hard. If people wear the masks, if they work on staying socially distant, if they wash their hands, I mean, this is what Fauci recommends. It's, that will actually enable us to open up and stay opened up. So. And yet, yes, in support.
Oh, we lost you. Okay, Councilmember Carling, you got another comment?
No, sorry.
No worries. Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Do we have public comment? Out of City Clerk?
We do. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
We have a comment from Brittany Kik. It says, "I'm wondering what the current protocol is for enforcing the mask ordinance. I have seen more people unmasked than masked, and with high-risk family, it makes us feel uncomfortable leaving our home to participate in our local economy." Then we have another one from Myra Blaylock. Does Livermore have the ability to, excuse me, does Livermore have the ability to do contract tracing, contact tracing, so we can do outdoor dining more safely? And those are the comments on Zoom.
Anything on YouTube?
City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over YouTube.
Yes, we do have comments over YouTube, and I wanted to remind that Perseidy's policy, we will be reading the last comment. That is part of the group. And the comment is from Summer Solstice. "It is a violation of Labor Section Code sixty-three zero-nine, and OSHA does not consider them PPE." And that is the end of the comments.
And Mayor, she was referring to masks as part of her previous comment.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, contract, contact tracing? No, we do not have the capability to do that. That's being undertaken by the Alameda County Health Department. They're the ones that are hiring the contact tracers. It's a very important means of containing infections because you, if someone is positive, you then go back and find out who they've been in contact with and then work to quarantine all of those. Berkeley has their own health department, so they're doing contact tracing. There's been some discussions about hiring healthcare students from Los Pecidos College to do some of the contact tracing, but Livermore does not have the capability to do that. With regards to mask enforcement, I'll hand it off to the, the city manager.
So at this point, our, our major efforts based on council direction has been for public education and information. We have also concentrated on retailers, restaurateurs, and places of business so that the rules are clearly posted, so that people understand when they enter a place of business, what the, what the rules are. And have had relatively a good success, or essentially a higher rate of success inside retailers, restaurateur areas, where areas have been signed and people have been vigilant about that. Certainly not a hundred percent, but much higher than our average. Out in open areas, we have not utilized enforcement as one of our tools. We have that ability. Obviously, we want to make sure that people understand the benefits of masks and of course, how much that is useful to the overall community to keep our case count down. We, of course, are having the sharpest rise of any tri-valley city in our case counts. And one of the things we want to make sure is that that's not because we have such a great downtown and everyone is visiting it there. There's obviously a number of factors in that, but we want to limit the ones where we can. And large numbers of people gathered together is a risk factor, even if they are outdoors, especially if they are lingering outdoors for a period of time. So we very much would like to, to make sure that people understand the consequences of that, encourage them to comply, especially when we're downtown in those much more crowded areas.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, a couple of things on this. One is, you know, the masks are clearly important. And of all the information I've seen, that's the one tool we have to protect the population. So what we have in this instance, without good compliance, we, you know, we're, people are getting sick. And second of all, our businesses are getting slammed. So it's, it's important that we figure this out as a community. Now, it's also been my observation that within the areas controlled by the restaurants, there's been generally good compliance with the rules, not perfect, but generally good. But as Mark mentioned, outside of those areas, not so much. And I think it's also, people haven't said it so far, but it seems to be age-dependent as well. Pretty obvious why, I guess. So my request for the city manager is to continue to monitor this situation very carefully, to have better statistics as to what kind of compliance we have, under what conditions, and to come back with options for us, because this isn't getting better. And I think we need to be prepared with what, what can we do? I think some jurisdictions are taking more definitive action. And we're in a situation now where, as a community, we really aren't taking this seriously, and we're harming ourselves just across the board. And then that is a transition into this request for the, the variance. And I'm not sure that the Board of Supervisors tomorrow is going to request it. But I wanted to ask, Mark, did you say that we're now into some kind of bureaucratic hair splitting as to even if they did, whether or not we would get it? Is that correct?
I don't believe those were my words, but yes. So i- i- if the intent of that is, is it unclear of whether we can bring ourselves into compliance? I think that, at least from the latest information we heard today, is absolutely true. I defer to our city attorney on this one for further comments, but this certainly is a case where we have a couple of different sets of regulations from two different levels of government, and it is anything but definitively clear at this point.
So what I would say is, it gets back to, okay, there are going to be those that say we shouldn't be granted a variance. And you can see that if we can't get our act together with respect to masks, you could, we're just handing those people all the evidence for why we aren't responsible. So I can come back to, we've got to get, we've got to look, we've got to be good and look good here in order for us to progress. I think the other thing that I found frustrating with what happened Friday is that what, as leaders, you know, we're, everybody's trying to get people to follow. But if you're not going to be reasonable and, but going to be, instead be capricious in what you do, it makes it very difficult. So I would request that we communicate to the people at both the county and the state level that putting out a press release on a Friday after businesses have ordered tens of thousands of dollars in individual establishment of goods, that this, and then telling them that they don't think they might be able to open, is a sure way to destroy them. And so we're trying to all come, come together around a plan and be reasonable and get behind it. But capricious action by the people at the county and the state's level is not helping. It's not making us any safer, and it's making a lot of people very frustrated and could lead to even less compliance. So I would request that we strongly communicate that whatever actions they take, that they be rational and cognizant of what businesses are facing. So that, that's my request there.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Carling, oh, no, Vice Mayor Warner, you, we've all got everybody here. Okay, Councilmember Monroe.
Following, following up on what Vice Mayor Warner said, had not occurred to me, I thought the word capricious was really well done. That is precisely the, the right word. And I'm wondering if, you know, asking staff to follow up on this is great, but is it possible for us to take action as a council to, you know, words to that effect? You know, this was, this is difficult. We're trying to do the right thing. Regardless of what happens going forward, we need clear, clear action so that we can help our businesses and also ensure good compliance because people actually know what the rules are.
I, I think going beyond that, the mayor and I talked earlier about possibly a letter going the, from the, not just us, but all the other cities that we can, expressing those sentiments that we need to be, we just need to do this in a good way.
Certainly, we need to be consistent, and we need to have clear, consistent direction. That's something that we, we, we as a council have, have always tried to, to do. People need to wear masks. And I think that as, as the city manager pointed out, there is better compliance because I've seen the signs that says, "You must wear a mask or you cannot enter this establishment." And, and we need, we can't have our police officers patrolling the downtown writing tickets for people not wearing masks. That's, that's not what they do. We have to rely on people's good sense. This is to protect not just them. You know, very early on, the reason to wear a mask was not to protect the mask wearer. It was to protect everybody else. It was to protect the most vulnerable, not the wearer of the mask. It was to protect other people. I think one of the great tragedies is just recently, there was, there was a, a website that was put out by, by a parent. The website was don'tmaskourkids.com. And she encouraged her daughter to go to a church function where none of the kids were wearing masks. Her daughter caught COVID-19 and she died. So that's the tragedy, is people, you wear masks to protect each other. It's not for yourself, but here was someone making a political statement, and their child died. So wear your masks. It's, 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 it's very simple. It's, it's, it's easy, and it's the smart thing to do. So there's nothing more I can say about that. Just, you, you gotta wear your masks. And I agree with the Vice Mayor, having a, a letter that I can start working on with the, the other mayors, asking for clear direction so that we don't get an email at, at nine o'clock on a Friday night saying, "Oh, we're going to change the rules." I think, because I think we misinterpreted an email from another State Department, "So we're going to change all the rules, but we're not going to change the order." So they need to be consistent. We need to be consistent in our message. And I think our message is consistent: Wear a mask. Protect everybody else in the community, but just wear a mask. It's very easy to do. It's the smart thing to do. Okay, any other comments? I think, well, we took public comment, right? Yeah.
One thing I would, I would like to add is, sorry, I couldn't put my hand up, but I just jumped right in. Is, it's not, it, it, we need to ensure that people are wearing masks, and we need to ensure that the masks fit, and that we don't have the chin mask and we don't have the, "Oh, I'm going to just cover my mouth" mask. I know people are making masks right and left. Getting masks that are really good and well-fitting continues to be, you know, so this is just anyone who wants to make it. Go for it. We need, we just need to make sure everyone has masks that actually fit over the nose and over the mouth.
All right, so we're, thank you for the update. We already took public comment, right? Okay, so we just received the report. All right, thank you. Moving on to 6.03, this is the approval of the City Council 2021 meeting calendar. All the dates are on there. All we have to do is, and the thing it is, is that doesn't apply to me. That's rather remarkable. I looked at that list and thinking, "Oh, I'm not going to be in any of these." So, we, do I have a motion to approve the calendar? Any last-minute changes anybody wants to make?
Well, I got a motion here. I'll make a motion to, even though I won't be here, I got to make it a last gasp for next year.
There you go. Councilmember Coomer makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, moving on to matters initiated. Let's go, Councilmember Monroe. You were centering my screen, so that's why I picked you.
Sure, I just had to unmute one more time. So, let's see. No matters initiated, a couple of things, several things to, to report out. First of all, I mentioned that I was going to bring up RENA numbers. On June 25th, I went to an A-MAG General Meeting webinar, and that, RENA numbers aren't coming up. So these are the Regional Housing Numbers Assessment that happens every, oh, shoot, I think eight years. We are going to have our, the final comment. This is a very long process. This was a discussion of the Housing Methodology Committee. What they're looking at is housing where there are more jobs and housing where there's patterns of racial and economic exclusion. So both of these are, are issues that are at the fore right now. The, feel that the equity factors need to be broad and that past RENA numbers are not going to be a guide to this. So right now, we're looking, they're discussing state funding, which will aid in facilitating housing production. So, because turns out affordable housing is hard to build and make it both affordable and cost out for developers. You actually need funding to come in from other sources. You also need funding to help develop good programs. Both of those are, are in process. There was real concern, I wish I was glad to see, that transportation, the housing and jobs were being linked and that, you know, this transportation, jobs and housing match was being put together in a way that might actually make sense. I raised the question about how COVID and telecommuting had affected this, the, the, you know, the plans, and the answer was, yes, they're taking it into account. It already was in the process as telecommuting had become a thing, and that was COVID even more so. July 1st, EBCE Workshop on Energy Acquisition and Accounting Principles. A lot of the time, my time in the last few months, along with Vice Mayor Warner, has been spent working on developing the Equity Inclusion Subcommittee. But in the meantime, a couple of things on homelessness have, have been coming up. This is a little bit premature, but we do have an application in for a tiny home village at Cross Winds Church. This is the, where the old freestanding dairy used to be. So we're hopeful that that's going to go forward. This is one of those church, county, city, everybody throwing their resources into it situations. Supervisor Hagerty really would like to see this done before he leaves office, and we're all working to see that that can happen, particularly in the environment, it's, it's tough. But city's working on hammering out the details to make sure that it'll happen, and we're hopeful that it'll go forward. I believe the mayor alluded to the Chestnut Square Family Apartments homelessness, homeless units that have opened up. So this is the family apartments. And we have 10 homes there for extremely low-income people who are currently homeless. This is the good news. Of course, the bad news is that the other units just had their pre-application closed. There were 27, almost 3,000 applications for 23 available units. The good news is there were 23 available units. The bad news is, we need more housing. About 18% of those live or work in Livermore, and Livermore residents will be given preference for these units. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this has been a really grim 2020. It's been hard, I think, I, I, as I've been watching city staff work on managing, moving into a COVID environment, managing the ever-changing landscape, and just trying to manage all the, keeping stuff going, I've been really impressed. And so I was particularly impressed this week when there was a whole lot of good news on how the city is in this difficult time, really investing in the community and the, and the community's future. So the library is reinstating the monthly lawyers in the library service, and this is consult, 10-minute consultations on various topics for, you know, legal access. You can schedule a consultation by calling the library. I'm not going to read out all of what you can do, but go to the library website and look. Fourth Thursday of each month. There's also, continues to be library curbside pickup. Stockman's Park is going forward, and there, we're getting potted trees and plants in the landscape area. Electrical and lighting's happening the rest of the month. So we're going to have Stockman's Park happen in, in the middle of all of this going forward. Hooray. We, staff has put in a grant application for stormwater, managing stormwater. And that's working on removing silt and invasive species around the Los Pecidos Gulf Course. It's going to enhance habitat for endangered species and reduce flooding. Vasco Road widening to hopefully help with commute traffic along that road. So just a shout out for some of the good stuff going on in the midst of, you know, one can seem, as I said, like a pretty grim time. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Coomer.
Well, I have only one thing between visits to UC Davis and Stanford Medical Centers. I've been busy doing that, and a Lafta Board of Directors meeting last Tuesday. But that, that, that is the extent of my involvement, right?
Very good. Well, the main issue is to be, is to stay well.
It's what we do.
Great, great. Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. On the 24th of June, I had a Stop Waste meeting. On the 25th, the League of California Cities meeting, and we also at that meeting heard from a number of folks talking about the RENA numbers. July 1st, the mayor and I interviewed candidates for advisory board positions, and I will say that we had a number of very well-qualified and excellent folks apply. Some people brand new to the community that want to get involved. And I think the mayor and I are always enthusiastic about people that are willing and able to jump right in when they move to a new community. That's really pretty nice to see. On the 8th, I had a Community Monitor Committee meeting. This is about the Altamont landfill. And then on the 9th of July, I had a Stop Waste meeting. I have two of those a month. This one is on the recycling board. Following up on Councilmember Monroe's comment about homelessness, I know that people sometimes wonder how they can get, how they can help. And the Chronicle last week ran a series of articles on the homeless, admittedly focused on San Francisco, but also including the larger Bay Area. And on Sunday, they had a, a section called "How You Can Help", and it was a couple of dozen pages that included both volunteering, how you could volunteer, and if you had the wherewithal to donate either food or money or clothes, also how to do that. So I call your attention to that if you're interested in knowing either A, how to volunteer to help or how to provide donations for the homeless. The only last thing I would say is, please wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner.
I think I'll mention is the Lafta Board meeting and also connection with Valley Link. And the, the concern here is that where the funding is for Valley Link and what phasing. So I also attended a MTC Subcommittee meeting, waited three hours through that to the end so I could inject something in public comment. I know the mayor put a letter into it. Others on the Valley Link Board also commented. So there was a lot of urging of reconsidering where the funding phase was for, going to be for Valley Link. And so staff agreed to come, think about it, and two options. One is that if you advance Valley Link to Phase 1 versus Phase 2, then something would come out. And there was a lot of discussion about, could they expand the thinking for how big the budget envelope was? And that got into a lot of concern about whether if they did, it would get approved by the regulators. But the bottom line is that those, I urge everyone to back Valley Link. And to do so is make sure you reach out to MTC. And to do so is make sure you reach out to MTC representatives and to the other local representatives and urge the Valley Link be put forward. There are a lot of competing projects. And I think we've got to make our voices heard in order to get it through. So I would, I would ask the mayor could elaborate on what I said on that matter as to how we could best help advance, advance Valley Link. With respect to matters initiated, I think Mr. Branding's comment about how we might make it easier for people to real-time interact, if we might think about that. I think we've talked about it. I have been in meetings where they allow people to at least audio come in and make their comment. And I do think we had talked about considering that. So I would like to know what our plans are with respect to going one step beyond and letting people actually submit their own comments orally. So that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. So last month had the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting and we voted almost unanimously, there is one, one vote against from Rebecca Salzman from BART to move the Valley Link, or sorry, to move into public comment the possibility of moving $400 million from Measure BB funds from BART to Livermore to move that to Valley Link instead. And so that is now going out to public comment and for the, the local agencies and public comments from everybody else. And that'll be coming back to ACTC for evaluation over, over August. And probably back to ACTC for final determination on, in September. Also attended the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. That was July 1st. There we voted to continue funding for a shuttle for the Altamont Corridor Express and also voted to send a letter to ACTC supporting the transfer of the $400 million to, to Valley Link. Today was the Multimodal Committee for the Alameda County Transportation Commission. And we deferred the expenditure plan update due to COVID-19 impacts on, on revenue. We also approved the long-term concept for the East 14th and Fremont Boulevard Corridor. Programs and Projects Committee, Alameda County actually has one of the highest rates in the country for railroad impact fatalities for people trespassing on, on the tracks. So Livermore is one of the stakeholders on this effort. And we voted to spend five and a half million dollars to plan the expenditure of a total of $57 million to implement rail safety programs throughout the corridor. We have here in Livermore, three of our sites will be Phase 1 sites and we'll be seeing the, the improvements in the, in the very beginning, in the first effort. So let's see. As far as matters initiated, there have been a number of cities that we have heard that have voted to cut funding for lease apartments. First with the promise of, of, they're going to cut the, the funding first and then figure out what they're going to do with the money later. This council is committed to have a, an extensive community dialogue to determine how best to use the resources dedicated to public safety, which continues to be our number one priority. Last year, this nation averaged a school shooting a week. In 2019, there were more mass shootings, 417, than there were days in the year. I heard from hundreds of students from Livermore and Granada High School last year that they wanted a more visible and a more consistent police presence to feel safe. Now we're hearing cities talk about eliminating police departments altogether and defunding them. The question is, how do we best employ the resources dedicated to our police departments? We all recognize that much of what we call upon our police to do is not about crime. When someone is mentally ill or in crisis, we call the police because that's what we've been taught to do. This is perhaps the time to stand up another alternative. Similar to a collaboration between Eugene, Oregon, Lane County and the Whitebird Clinic. In a model called Cohoots, the crisis assistance helping out on the streets, non-emergency calls are assisted by dispatchers who send teams of paramedics and mental health specialists instead of police. This can help free up police to do what they're trained to do. And that's public safety. As I see it, this is a both and, and not an either or. Currently, Alameda County is piloting a program in North and Central County called CAT. And that includes a mental health specialist who would have the ability to partner with the police to engage people who are in crisis. That people who are experiencing homelessness or mental illness calls for relating to 5150s and others. As a matter initiated, I suggest that we reach out to our neighboring Tri Valley cities in Alameda County in an effort to collaborate on standing up a similar model here in the Tri Valley. Wait, okay, I got it. I got a thumbs up from Councilmember Carling. Thumbs up. Okay, we got, I got five big thumbs up here. So great. Thank you very much. I think this, rather than just as a knee jerk reaction, cut funding, let's see if we can stand up another model. And then once that takes some of the responsibility off the police department, then we could be allocating the funds. But we need to stand both of them up so that they can work together. So thank you very much for that support.
I have one question, one clarifying question with that, which is, does this, is this separate from or how does this fit in with the Inclusion and Equity Subcommittee? Does it at all?
Well, not really. It tangentially does. But what I'm proposing is that we work with the Tri Valley, because Eugene, Oregon is about 170,000 people. And that is enough to stand up their program. Livermore is about 90, Dublin about 60, Pleasanton about 70. So we've got about the same critical mass here. So if we combine our efforts, maybe there'd be enough to stand up a program with the help from Alameda County. So that's, that's my, my thought. City manager looked like he wanted to weigh in here for a moment.
So no, I understand the request here and we will certainly make sure that, that everybody's kept aware of our efforts and our progress on that. So that if there's pieces of this that fits in with other activities, like our Subcommittee, they'll be aware.
Well, I think this, and this is a job really for the city managers to come together. The, the mayors come up with the will, the city managers come up with the way. You guys are the ones that are going to make it happen. So certainly appreciate any of your efforts. And if you need more direction or resources from the council, that's our job as well. Okay. Yes. Vice Mayor.
And just along those lines is they requested city manager figure out how, what department within your organization that's managed through. I think this is related to what Councilmember Carling was talking about earlier with, you know, that I expanded on, which was there are some aspects of what we're doing is sort of human services related and not so much the traditional police. So as you're thinking about standing this thing up, which is a wonderful idea, also come back with how it gets managed. And I think of my own idea for the future, I don't know if it's matters initiated, but the homelessness Subcommittee purview, I've always said should be expanded more to human services in general, because this is an area that kind of touches in there because some of the people that might need this are homeless, but some are not. But they are, they have issues. So I think I would request you come back with how are we going to manage this? Would, you know, some thoughts on that?
Very good.
Okay. And finally, Livermore lost two friends last month, John and Carol Pitts. John worked at the Livermore Radiation Laboratory and later the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, as well as serving on our Planning Commission and the Valley Study Group. Carol was a mediator for the Alameda County Superior Courts and was a leader in restorative justice programs. She also taught yoga, Tai Chi and co-authored a translation of the Bhagavad Gita from the original Sanskrit. Talk about diversity. After having been married for 65 years, they died within a day of each other. They were kind and gentle people and we can all learn from their examples. So with that, I will adjourn in honor and memory of John and Carol Pitts. I adjourn, see you on July 27th.
Good night, Al.
Good night, Al. Thank you, John.